Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. For those of us who couldn't stand, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hello and welcome to our work session. Monday, April 24th. And we'll get right into that. Tonight, I believe Jim Granville is excused. So he won't be here tonight. We're going to start with the social media policy and Luke. By the time you got to me, we already had this on the agenda. So really, I don't think unless anybody has anything to discuss. I think there's just a couple of spelling. Errors in names. That we have to look at.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, anybody have any comments? We'll just move it on. We've already got it on the agenda, so we can go through that one. Next, we have the Quaker rezoning application at 359 Quaker. Is there anybody here for that tonight? Sir, would you like to come up to the mic?
Good evening.
Yes, go ahead.
Brian is here from Matia and Tia representing the commissioners.
Okay. Okay, is there anything you want to say or anything before we discuss it or?
Well, I mean, we had sent out on April 6th, the memo.
Sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
I apologize.
You can take it out.
You can take it right out if you want.
That's all right. We'll just adjust it.
There you go.
And with regards to our presentation before the planning board, after our second visit with the planning board. You know, the question had come up. About the concerns over potential spot zoning. Because it's an individual parcel, we are seeking to get it rezoned. For multifamily residential. Under those circumstances, we laid out based on, you know, my review of the law and our understanding. That while we are seeking a rezoning of this particular parcel, the unique characteristics of these parcels are such based on how it's situated and where it's located. And based on the considerations that are normally taken into account when such a request is made. That we felt the town board could be in a very comfortable position, knowing that there really could be no negative consequence to. Ruling in our client's favor in this particular instance. It's not going to change the characteristics of the neighborhood in the sense that while we do have commercial. On some of the adjoining parcels, the one side is a parking lot to a commercial building. It borders on village property. And directly across the street is the Polo Grounds where there's R1 and R3. Consistent with your comprehensive plan. It is going to accentuate. You know, access in terms of additional forms of housing. It's also going to, it's also connected by sidewalks so that it's fits into the comprehensive plan and that it's 0.3 miles from. A retail and commercial plaza, 0.6 miles from the main street corridor. It's walkable. It's connected by sidewalks. There are no safety issues. In addition, it would appear based on a general practical review, there's a need for additional market rate. Apartment housing and rental housing in the town, so we feel it's complimentary in that regard. There's really only two pockets at present and looking at the overall zoning. Configuration of the town of C3 zoning. One is in this particular district and one is over kind of on the South Wales border. So it'll be difficult because of the very unique characteristics of this parcel, which kind of sticks out like a jagged tooth, if you look at the zoning map. For anyone to really make the argument that they can kind of cross compare. And, and ask for, you know, similar relief from C3 zoning. So. Appreciating in my capacity as a town attorney in a different jurisdiction. Viewing these decisions from a different perspective. We, we feel that it is a, it's in. An appropriate and best use for this property. It's going to add to the tax base. It's going to add to some potential additional housing. It's consistent with your comprehensive plan and we don't see any real negative repercussions in terms of anybody saying you've established. A precedent that could be used against the town of the future.
All right, thank you.
Any questions from anyone?
Questions from the board?
I did, well, I think you answered it in your presentation. I looked over your. The document you submitted and it mentioned, you know, other housing options, but these are intended to be market rate apartments. Is that correct? So basically, as much as you can rent them for, that's what you're going to end up renting them for.
I would think that's my client's goal, just based on the size of the investment they'd be looking to make on that property.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I'll. Turn this over to the board for discussion. Anybody have anything they want to add to that?
I, I do. This is the way I look at it. This, this parcel. Has a piece of. Commercial property, industrial property on the left of it. It has industrial property on the right. It has all of Commerce Way, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, but all of Commerce Way is all zoned industrial. To me, this is the definition of spot zoning to put. And we've learned. Rezoning should only be done in extreme. Circumstances. We've learned that with a couple, three that we have done over the past, well, my. Years on the board. And I just think frankly. Approving this would be short sighted and. There will be problems down the road that will not be so easy. Easily resolved because this will already have apartments in it. And there will be commercial buildings and industrial buildings. At some point in time, all the way down Commerce Parkway.
I, I think that with, with all due respect, I think that's a textbook response to the request. And in general would be, would be. You know, would be kind of what we'd anticipate. A town board is entitled to look at the unique characteristics of a parcel and make this decision if they're comfortable that it fits with. All of the other factors you need to look at, such as consistent with the comprehensive plan, best use of the property.
I don't see where you say it's consistent with a comprehensive plan because. I don't see that.
Okay. And then the question is, in, in trying to find the best use for this property based on the size and the location of the property. It's, it's difficult. For me, at least based on my professional experience in working with commercial clients. To figure out. Based on the size and configuration of the parcel, how this could be effectively used as an industrial site. So.
I'll give you that. However. I have said in this spot many times, not many times, and, and just recently here, a couple of years ago, three years ago, when we rezoned a piece of property. And throughout the process, as they were wrapping it up. Some things came up where the, where the lay of the land didn't quite. End up being just the way that the architect had thought and there were some changes in some fencing, frankly. And we were proposing changes that benefited. The residents on each side of this property and we still got negative feedback and we still got criticized for it. So putting 10 apartments. In the middle of. Industrial, industrial and industrial behind you. I, I mean, it might be textbook. And if it is, it's because. It'll happen.
Well. In that same textbook, there would be exceptions to the rule. And I think this is the textbook exception. I think this lot is so uniquely situated. And I do not believe the changes, the characteristic of the neighborhood in any way, because you can say industrial, 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 but if you take a ride or a walk over to that parcel. And you look on either side of you, you've got the United States Post Office, you've got the parking lot too. I forget the name of the company, ED Delavan.
API.
And then immediately across the street. Contiguous with those same industrial sites, you have a beautiful residential development.
That's what's there today.
Well, that's what.
We need to look down the road.
Right. And, and so. I, I understand we can agree to disagree on this point. I'm just sharing with the rest of the town board, some of the other elements of that neighborhood. That make it, it's not like it's, it's sitting under what we would. Maybe in our minds view as the center of an industrial site, when you take a 360 panorama. Of how it's currently situated. I mean. Right now, it's, it's a home that's converted into offices. And, 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 and they're making that work. And I'm not sure that fits terribly well either there, but. To change that into an apartment housing building that offers some additional housing options in that location in the town. I think would be a benefit and because of its connectivity to some other residential areas. I think it does fit into elements of your comprehensive plan. And. So while I appreciate the reason there's a number of you up there is, is you're all going to have different points of view. We, we feel there's a lot of strengths to the proposed plan and. That this is a perfectly appropriate site for a reason, but I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board?
Well, I'd like to first of all, say that's the first time Deputy Supervisor Snyder has ever been accused of doing anything textbook. So that was fantastic. No problem anytime. I, I mean, I have no moral obligation to the, the plan of building apartments. But what you had pointed out, I think is dead on with my concern is that we have limited commercial zones. And we're going to inhibit the ability of other commercial entities to enter our. Community where, where that's, we've decided that's where we want them if they're going to come in. And to echo what Deputy Supervisor Snyder said. We don't know what's there's there, what there's, what's there today and there's what's going to want to come in. And we have to take consideration of the future boards and the future residents. That we have an apartment building and suddenly they're fighting against some sort of industrial. Development in the zone that we designated for industrial development, we're just going to create a headache down the road because we know that's going to happen. We know the, the residences apartment complex say, we don't want to live in front of. Business X. Well, that's exactly where we want business X because that's our industrial commercial zone. So we don't want to create almost inevitable conflict down the road for future boards, for future residents.
If, if there was no other contiguous residential areas. Which I don't think the character of which is going to change anytime in our, at least in our lifetime, based on what's been developed across the street. And quite frankly, the immediate, immediate vicinity, it's not like you have miles of industrial property on either side of this. You get to residential pretty quick on both sides. And so I, I, I would suggest that one of the other elements that this community might lack right now. Is, is choice of housing. And, and so we wouldn't be standing in front of you making this petition and application. If some of those elements didn't exist. But, but understanding that. You know, one of the needs in the area right now, while there's certainly tons of beautiful single family housing. Is, is some mixed use housing. We think it's a perfect opportunity to take this very unique parcel, make a sizable investment, add to your tax base. Create some other housing options that are going to complement some of the other businesses in the area. And, and, and continue to support the community in that regard. I'm, I'm not, I'm not dismissing. The various, the very obvious concerns that have been raised. I think there's a compelling argument that, that in, in our view overrides that with the value of this parcel and what could be done there. And, and if there was not that other connectivity, I probably would have discussed to my clients that, you know, you're wasting your time and money having me go to speak to this town board. In this particular instance, we looked at all of those elements. And I thought they made a, I thought their particular plan for this parcel, how it's situated and connected was a compelling argument for this type of relief.
I, where are the, the comprehensive plan are you referring when you, you refer? I mean, when I. Read this, just the text in front of me that I had before this meeting says the. At the west end of Route 28 near the village, the town would like to see a future complimentary expansion of the Commerce Green Industrial Park. Which would suggest to me that our comprehensive plan is looking for that area to be industrial, which is why it's zoned the way that it is. So a conversion to a residential which would permit even because R3, our code bounces back to R2 to R1. The potential for a single house to be built in that, that lot. So it, it doesn't make sense to me unless, you know, you're, you're, you can find some places in here that I have missed that where this would be. In compliance with our comprehensive plan, you can take it from an industrial in our commercial zone, which is what we have now, a C3. And turn it into a residential zone. And, and the, 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 the places across the street may not. Comply with the comprehensive plan that we, that we do not enact, but that we follow. But clearly that area is not. Out of the ballpark here to say that that should be an industrial area. And so the burden on us to change is different than what it is right there right now. And it, it seems to me based on this and based on the. Based on the character of the area that it's, it's a difficult ask to, to, to give you, but I'm willing to listen to you and hear your thoughts on the.
No, I appreciate it. I mean, you know, we'll reiterate a little. I'm, I'm not going to read from what I presented in, in writing to the town board before. There are obviously multiple elements to the comprehensive plan. Some of which I think we fit hand in glove with in terms of. What, what you're trying to enhance with regards to residential options and connectivity. And, and supportive of your retail district. It's true that when that plan was put together, this particular section of town, I. Actually would be very curious historically. How this particular parcel kind of got left where it was when I look at the zoning map. But it is what it is. And so, you know, as far as. Again, if you, if you take a practical view of all of the elements around this parcel. And, and current or future intended uses. Is there the potential for a single family home to be built there? No. Would I expect that that would ever be approved? No. With a, with a 10 unit, with the investment of a 10 unit apartment building on there, is there going to be any fear of potential single family home being built on there in the future? Not likely, just like all the properties across the street will remain residential for the foreseeable future for generations, based on what's already been invested there. So. You know, we don't feel like we're, we're taking a parcel. That has no other connection to a residential aspect of your community. And we're sticking it in front of a, a bunch of manufacturing facilities. You know, we're, we're talking about the, the land as it's currently constituted under its current uses, or we wouldn't even be able to make this application. So, you know, living next door to the post office and across the street from, you know. Single, you know, single family residential homes and being 0.3 miles away from a retail district I could walk to by myself with my wife and my kids. We, we don't, we don't feel that's a huge stretch. I can walk. Less than a, a few hundred yards in either direction, I'm, I'm back into residential properties. You know, as you head toward Jewett Homewood or as you head back in toward the village. So. You know, I, I do think because of the very unique location and characteristics of this lot. It, it's, it's not the stretch that you might consider if this was a similarly sized parcel. In the middle of what is industrial on the other side of the street. Industrial for a half mile one way or a half mile the other way. I mean, when you drive through, when you drive through on that street heading into the village. I'm, the, the concept in my mind is not industrial. I understand how it's currently zoned, right or wrong. But as I'm coming down the Jewett Homewood corridor, one way or the other, from the village or into the village.
I, I think it's difficult in my head to think that that is residential for sure. And you talk about walking towards Osher, when you go towards Jewett Homewood, you have an off of the main thoroughfare. But if you walk in the other direction, in order to get to a residential home, you have to get all the way to the. Corner because you go through the Bank of Holland, you go all the way through there. And clearly, when the comprehensive plan was, was written, we, although I agree that we do need apartment buildings and we do need more housing. In the immediate vicinity of the, the village, this part of the village was planned to be. An expansion of our commercial district. And if you see, you've got the plaza, you have the other businesses down there. It is a more and. Sort of commercial moving into industrial with API part of the village and the town. So, you know, I don't. I don't see that as residential is my personal opinion, but when I read the comprehensive plan, I don't see that as the objective either. And to rezone, I think, I mean, you have the ability to seek a variance, correct? If, if we would remain as a. The way that it is zoned right now, my personal opinion is that. The burden on the applicant to request something that would be a change of a zone is quite high. And I don't see that we've met that here.
And just to mention too. You know, this isn't going from an R1. You know, something very somewhat close. This, this is industrial. This is zoned industrial C3. You could literally put just about anything you wanted on that piece of property. And the adjoining pieces of property. It to, to put that, to put a small section of residential in the middle of that, I. I'm just against it.
The, the recommendation, the first time I believe this came up was to. Modify the application and seek the variance. We, we went back down to the planning board to discuss that as an option. And ultimately it was determined that it might be more appropriate. I, I, I thought that was already discussed and reviewed here.
So what we, what we reviewed was a change to our zone, another change to our zoning laws, which would have. Permitted multifamily dwellings within a C2 or C3 district.
Change the local law.
Which would not be a variance, right? Your variance would be specific to you in your application.
And so, so that was contemplated and I, I believe the determination, the request was sent back to us. To modify the request and come back with the petition for the result.
But there was, the variance wouldn't have come to us. You were requesting us to change.
I, I meant the.
You were requesting a zoning change of all of the C1 district and to include or C2, to include multiple family units.
But I, I believe that the direction of this body at the time, and we went back to the planning board, or we've gone back and forth a couple of times now. So honestly, we're trying to work within what we think. You know, this body would determine might be in the best interest of the town. I, and as much as we appreciate all those criticisms, we would stand behind our position that. The rezone would be the most applicable thing here without, you know. Significant negative consequence with regards to setting any precedent that would impact your other areas of three C3 zoning. And.
Have you been to the C3 zones out, the other C3 zones we have in the town?
I mean, I've looked at them on the map. I, I haven't gone and visited the sites. I don't see any of them sticking out like a. Like a lone tooth in a.
Well, I think we have to take that in context. It is a, a historical lot within the other parts of the village, but the C3 zone out there is also difficult for development. There are historically residential buildings out there as well. We, we don't have enough C3 zones in the, in the town as a whole as it is right now. And. In that zone, you could say the same thing. So this could be setting a precedent because how much would we be willing to chip away at our C3 zone over there? I, I realize we need to update our comprehensive plan, but we have what we have right now. The comprehensive plan does seem to fit with the current zoning. So, I mean, my, my position is that we, we do not grant the request to.
I think we've, everyone has stated their cases here. I. I believe it's spot zoning myself and I agree with Luke with the. Setting a precedent with other pieces and properties that I've just not for rezoning. So, I mean, we're going to vote on it. Under old business. Unfinished business. I'm sorry. But I think everyone's stated their case. We really isn't anything else to. We can sit there and argue about, but it.
Just, just a, I, I agree with your interpretation. If you take a snapshot of how the, how the area exists today. You can make the argument, but we don't know what the, the area is going to look like in 20 years or what's going to want to come in. And we don't want to prohibit that growth that we specifically want to foster in that area. So that's, that's the way I see it.
I greatly appreciate your consideration and time.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the special event application for the parking lot. Use for the rack and this is for the community pool parking lot. On June 8th, they're having their. Ribbon cutting for their new building and they have asked the town if they could use. The parking lot.
So Monique is here, if you. So Monique is here representing the rock.
Oh, yes. Did you want to come on? I'm sorry, I didn't see you. How are you tonight?
Very well. How are you all? So we're asking for a use of the parking lot. For our dedication opening event on June 8th. We actually received. The official notice from West Hur that we'll be using that parking lot as well, but we were hoping to maybe use it as overflow. We're not sure that we're actually need it. But it is for the opening. Event on June 8th. So we think that people will be arriving around 1:30, 1 o'clock. And we'd be cleared out of the, any kind of parking that we would use by 5 o'clock.
And I believe I've already checked with baseball and everything else like that. There's no issues with.
We didn't see any conflicts and also we were planning on not using the parking lot or area closest to the tennis courts. In case anybody wanted to use those during that time. But again, I'm not really sure how much of it we'll, we'll need because we will have access to that full lot across the street.
Okay. Thank you.
And what, what do you say to the term, there ain't no party like a rock party? And should we be concerned about that?
Um, not this time, no, because we'll be wrapping it up by five. Maybe the after party somewhere else.
We'll let the village deal with that.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I just got a text that Councilman Granville is on Zoom. So I don't think he's planning on being a full participant, but he's prepared to answer questions. To do with the, what we have coming up for the West Falls.
Oh, okay. Any questions on the application for rack? Anybody? But all right, we have that on the agenda. No, West Falls temporary use permit, West Falls Center of Arts. Long as you're on, Jim, would you like to? Go through this for us?
Yeah, absolutely. Can you guys hear me?
Absolutely.
Oh, good, good. If you need an address, I am at. I'm at 1950 North Oceans Boulevard in. Lauderdale by the sea. It's just lovely here. Very happy to be here. But as far as the. Special use permit. For the park, we're going to have the US Army Band there. It's going to be free, open to the public. There won't be alcohol. Served. It's sponsored by West Falls Center for the Arts. It's something really that we're excited about. We had the Air Force. Band at West Falls last year. Inside the facility, they're going to be in town in the East Aurora area that same. Timeframe. And so they've, they've agreed to, actually, I think they agreed to us and then they decided to go play, I think on the 3rd. Of July in. East Aurora. And we have a special thanks to April Baskins and Jim Melchewski, our. Legislator who are donating the band shell for us to use and as well as for. When they come to East Aurora, they're donating the band shell as well for that use.
Question, Jim, parking and traffic control.
Yeah, I, I. It's, it is a, a couple of months away. I don't know that Bill Kancy could talk to Shane or anyone about. Parking outside of, on the, the road and on the driveway heading down there, using the parking facility, the parking lot that's over there. But as far as traffic, I. Yeah, I guess we would talk to Shane about that. I didn't, I haven't done that yet. I don't know if he's there, if he, if he's there right now, maybe he can answer if Bill or Carolyn spoke to them.
We would need a, a written. Traffic and parking. Document.
Did you hear that, Jim?
I did hear that.
Yeah, for, for the application and temporary use permit and. I think we implemented this a couple of years ago where we need a, just a traffic and parking plan. To attach to the application, which isn't. Isn't difficult, but we just need that. And. I wouldn't have any problem. I don't know if we should vote on it tonight contingent upon that plan or?
I wouldn't have a problem with that. It sounds like a great. A great event. But we do just need, you know, just to know. How you're going to funnel the cars and, and the safety of that area.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll, I'll work with Liz and work with the chief and make sure that we get something. Real soon.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board?
Did you say, I might have missed it. Did you say alcohol will be served or will not be served?
Will, will not be served. I mentioned too, it should be in the application. In the application as well, that there are going to be food trucks in the parking lot.
Yeah, there is. Okay. Any other questions, Luke? Anything? Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Okay. Then I'll be here for the whole meeting.
Okay, good. All right, next we have the GASP policy, the gas policy, and that's. The Government Accounting Standards Board. And this is to, to refer to any leases that we have, financial leases. And. What we're approving would be the gas 87 policy, which includes a threshold amount of $30,000, which matches the threshold. Which includes, which is included in our capital. which includes, uh, which is included in our capital asset policy. So any, any kind of lease that we have, copy machine, um, what other equipment do we lease? Martha? Said it.
Postage machine.
Postage machine, but it, it was not over thirty thousand dollars. We just have to have this, uh, agreement. Um, everyone understand it? Good, got it?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah. Such as items that we're leasing. It's not things that you, I see excluded leases include like timber rights and things like that. But it's just things that we're leasing, not things we're leasing out.
Right.
And this is a requirement of accountability. There you go. Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Moving on. This is a request from Elizabeth Avizio to hire Roger LeBlanc to be a part-time dog control officer. Uh, Roger resides at one fifty nine Park Dale Avenue. And he'll be starting at twenty dollars an hour. Does anybody know this guy?
We generally like to appoint people to these positions who are active in the community, right?
Um, why would you want to do that? Good for you.
To stay here in the region. You know, I'm still playing with the hard. Of people for the last thirty five years, why not?
It's tough to go a hundred miles an hour and then go down to nothing, isn't it?
Any questions from the boards? Nope. Okay. You'll vote on it at our next meeting. It'll be a close one though. Okay, next is a tree purchase for the, um, campus here. And, uh, I think I'll let Chuck. Do you want to?
Sure. Sure. Um, well, as I mentioned here, uh, we would like to purchase three in the end of a tulip trees, um, as specified. And they're just, just a plant, uh, on the, on the edges of the parking lot to enhance this, the beauty of everything and, and just to give a small buffer. I mean, they're just a, they're a decorative tree. It's not like a pine tree. It's not like, uh, something along the lines that truly buffers visual and sound and so on, but, uh, but it'll help and, and they will look beautiful where they go. So.
Uh, and I do want to add that we did meet with the tree board a long, long time ago and they were in favor of these trees. So, you know.
Yes. Okay.
Can't go against the tree board here.
No. I thought that would be an easy.
All right, AEDs and Joe was out last meeting and he's got a whole bunch of information. So much. So, okay, so I, the genesis of this is obviously we're building two new, uh, bathrooms outside the pool, uh, using our ARPA funds and, and Chuck has been nice enough to shepherd that project through and has done a gangbusters job. Uh, the EA baseball offered to donate us, donate to us the two AEDs that they own, which are due for battery replacement and pad replacement. Um, they're also a little bit older, five or six years old, so they don't have the latest, uh, gadgets. Uh, that made us aware of the fact that we probably ought to have AED of at least N AED available, um, in those bathrooms or adjacent to where, uh, people are playing baseball, adults and children, plus they have the tennis courts and the pickleball courts over there. So I did, I got a quote for, uh, both. I got a quote to replace the battery and the pads, the, the pads came through so far, not the batteries. But that's six hundred bucks per unit just for pads. Um, and we're going to add to that times two if we wanted to take both of those, right? And, um, I don't have the battery yet because there's, uh, that particular unit changed batteries somewhere down the line. So I get to get the battery number. But all this is by way of saying for not that much more money, we have a quote here in front of us that's going to get us the state of the art unit. And Roger actually confirmed, um, that's the same that you use. Is that correct? The fire department uses this, um, Powerheart G five fully auto. It's, it's the same as a police use as well. So our first responders are already familiar with this unit. It has some extra functionality that, excuse me, the units that baseball wanted to donate does not have. Namely this, you, you put this on, it's non-polar, meaning you can't mess it up. The one that goes on the chest, the ones that goes on the side. And it'll give you instructions whether a shock is warranted, in which case it'll deliver it, tell you to stand back. If it's not, it will talk you through CPR. Why you're doing it. So it's, it's, it's top of the line. I don't know if that's the right word, but it's, it's, it's a really nice unit. The quote includes the case, which I know is, is a topic of concern because we're going to have this avail- it has to be available to be functional. Uh, my idea was to put it in, uh, one of the two new bathrooms. Um, that makes it accessible to the public, which is part of its point. But in terms of security, the, the case, uh, emits as a, a very bright strobe and an audible alarm when it's open. So if somebody opens the box to access the AED, the thing goes off and just shutting the door doesn't stop that. It takes a key to turn off that alarm. So if a kid gets overly curious or something, he's going to get quite a surprise if he goes poking around in the AED box. Um, which hopefully will be enough of a deterrent to keep people from doing it. Um, along with that, I think I quoted out the pediatric pads that we needed, um, the sign to put outside that says AEDs here. And, uh, that's it. Um, it would include one of the problems with taking over EA baseball's AEDs is that you have to have a prescription from a, a doctor. It's kind of weird. This comes with that. And then we would also agree to a, uh, maintenance plan. So essentially what that means is somebody from the parks theoretically would go out there and, and, uh, keep track once a week, look at it, make sure the green light's on. That's what they do at my work. It's very easy. And then after five years, we replace the batteries in the pads, or if the green light goes off, we know we got a problem and, uh, we take action appropriately and we can, and this is the pricing that you see on here is a state contract pricing. So it's, it's the best we're going to get. And that is my AED presentation in a nutshell. Any questions?
Yes, I have one.
Yes.
That, so this is in a case, but it has to be inside. It can't be, it can't be.
It can be. It got this case. They do make a case that requires electric power that's heated. And that can, that can be outside. So if we wanted to, yeah, so if we.
So this requires heat?
Actually, no, let me, let me, let me take that back. The one they recommend for outside has heat. The other advantage of this particular AED is that it has a better, uh, temperature. Um, it, it stands, it's able to withstand more temperature fluctuation. I think this goes down to like thirty degrees and all the way up to, I don't know, on the upper end over.
Does this needs to be plugged in?
No, no, it's got a battery pack. So if we, if you, the idea was if you're going to put it outside, expose the elements all the time, the, you'd upgrade this box. So it'd still have the alarm and strobe on it. But it would have electric that would keep it at a steady temperature. Whereas we put in the bathroom, we would use it, my thinking is during the season. I'm guessing we're not going to keep those bathrooms open in the winter because they're not heated, correct? So, and, and baseball isn't going on, tennis isn't going on, pickleball isn't going on. So the park returns to a more passive type use. And we have a lot of passive type uses, parks in use in our, in our town, and we don't provide AED service. So I think this will be an improvement over what we have, but yeah, it wouldn't be there year round under this quote.
So you want to remove this and?
Store it.
And, and back to.
Yeah, we could bring it to town hall or whatever.
Town hall at your house.
Which brings up my question. Would we be interested in putting one in it? Awesome. There, there is one in the senior center, correct Martha? Something to think about. I mean.
It's a thought. I mean, town hall isn't that available. It's only available, you know, Monday through Friday, but maybe if you need one, you need one. There, there were, there you go. Yeah, they're worth a million dollars if, uh, if you, it comes into play.
Just throwing it out.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it. That's for sure.
But no, I think that's a good idea.
So this would be one unit or two?
This is one unit. I mean, do we need two units? Hopefully we never need two units. Um, that's what EA baseball has, but they just keep theirs in an office on Glead. I guess they still have some storage space available with them over there. I don't know if they pull them out for games or what, but this will be extremely, uh, available. And like I said, and it will go beyond baseball. It's also for the folks playing tennis and folks playing pickleball too.
Just wondering if we want to maybe talk to Arsenal about, uh, having them acquire one through the state bid might be. Is that something we want to look into? I don't know if they.
They might have one. I, I would think they, they'd be bananas if they don't, but I have no idea.
No, they have to be, uh, more of a portable.
Yeah, I mean, this is portable too. I mean, it's in a bag and everything. It's just it lives in its little house.
Right.
And it's not being used.
Yep. Yeah, but with the sports played over there, it's a great idea. Something we need to do.
Yeah. And I think, I think it'll be, it'll be secure. It'll be in a bathroom.
Yeah. And we approved the locks, right? Dave, didn't we do that last meeting?
Yeah, Joe.
Yeah, decided to put the timer locks on there, uh, and they're below the procurement. So you're all set.
And that, those will what? Go from like eight AM to nine PM or something?
Yeah, I think we said normally seven till nine is what most of them are.
So while the park, parks in use, the AED would be, be available.
So they'll be secure overnight. That's where you have the problems.
Yeah.
So do we want to add this to our, um, new business to vote on?
Yeah, I would like to. I don't have a, uh, budget line.
I would, I was thinking of contingent.
That's what I was hoping for. So that's, that'd be fine with me.
I don't have the actual number of. Uh, any other questions from the board? Okay. And then, uh, complete streets. And I think Luke wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure we were all on the same page here when we look forward to the, uh, to, to putting together a complete, complete streets policy. That's the difficult word to say, two words to say in a row. So, um, so, uh, and I want to ask your opinion on how we want to move forward with this, if we want to move forward. Um, this would be the final item required for us to receive our bronze certification as a climate smart community. Now, what is a complete streets policy? It is a non-binding policy that sets out towns, uh, the town's goals for developing streets to be complete streets, meaning are we considering stormwater runoff? Are we considering safety precautions that could be a part of the road? Are we considering pedestrian and bicycle use? Um, what does it not do? Does not force any of those things, right? And we also set out our exceptions, which are important as New York State gets more and more regulations on this. We want to make sure that we have the ability to not put things on Boys Road or Schoper or wherever, where it doesn't make sense. Now, what we would want with this policy is that every new road or complete redo of a road, right, would be, can, we would consider the impact on stormwater. You know, is there any future traffic? Do we need to have a paved, um, um, you know, part of the road for a bicycle, just as a, uh, some, something over there on Boys Road? Do we want to have a, it's not ours, but would there want to be more of a, a curb there before you get to the ditch because you have, you know, light shows out there? Um, it does not apply for resurfacing, maintenance, you know, pavement recycling, anything like that. So it really is exclusive to the big projects that we're doing. Now, Dave, I know is already really considering all these things when he does a project. Again, this does not apply to everywhere, right? There are, there are places where it would maybe make sense and where it may not make sense.
We've already, and I think Dave's already done this reading road, wasn't it?
No.
We, ever since reading every road, we do do that, Jim. You're correct. So we already are doing a lot of this. I, I like how there's no, um, we, we cannot do it too. It's no commitment. It's just saying.
Right.
Basically, you're making an effort to, to make things.
Be harder to do a bike path on a country road.
Right. It's going to happen.
It's, it's, there's, there's different situations in different parts of the town and on different parts, different roads. All this is getting us to think about what the use is, what the future use is. So, you know, near Emery Park, is there a path that people are walking down frequently to get to the, you know, or, or near, you know, Underhill or something, people walking to Major's Park or whatever it may be. And then we would consider that if we were looking at a new project.
Is there a policy already made up?
There are several policies. Um, I would want to work on them. Most of the policies are for villages. And so they're not very applicable to us because we don't want, the same thing we're going to have on a Glen Ridge or, you know, Castle Hill that we would want to look for a project. We're not going to want to see on Laugh, Lapham or.
Right.
Boys, right? Um, I haven't found any towns that I think we'd be comfortable with. So we do need to do some, some drafting here, but there's a, there's a lot of policies out there. Um, but again, I, I haven't seen one yet that's goes to the sort of more rural nature of our town compared to where they're, they've been implemented.
Okay.
And I don't think we want to just take it and use it because.
So do you, do you want to take?
So I, 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 I will, I am working on a first draft. I didn't know if we wanted to get the code committee together. I didn't know if we wanted to just take a look at it next meeting or whatever you want to do. Just wanted to get ahead of it. So we, we're all on the same page with it. And if anybody wants to work closely with me in more detail before we present it, let me know that too. You know, we can go back and forth on a first draft and then work together because.
Why don't you come up with a first draft and then let's take a look at it and.
Yeah, certainly to the board.
That's something you want.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of, I'll, and I'll work with you on that a little bit. Cause I can see where lots of places it will apply.
Yeah, I, I think the more people have looking at this, the better it's going to be, right? Because you're not going to, you can't all think of everything at the same time. So.
Yeah. And then we can discuss too, whether the code committee would be best or whatever.
Yeah. All right. Let's do that. Then I'll get a first draft with everybody, but you and I will do it more and more detail and we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Very good.
Yeah. And if we get it done by the end of July, I think, then we're still on path to apply for the bronze and get it still this year.
Good deal.
All right.
July I'll be here before you know it.
Nothing else on the work session. We'll go right into our regular meeting. And number one, there are no public hearings tonight. And number two, need a motion to approve the April tenth, two thousand twenty-three work session and meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second by Chuck. Second, second by Luke. Any discussion? Own favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried.
The busters?
You're late.
Uh huh.
Okay, audience one. This is an opportunity for anyone, uh, in the audience to address any issues that are on the agenda.
I have something that is not on the agenda, Mr. Supervisor. Would you, uh?
There would be, you know, business that would be on audience two then. I'm sorry.
I'll wait at your direction. Thank you. Thank you.
He just wants you to sit and watch us for a while.
Sorry.
Anybody else for anything that is on the agenda? Brad?
If Rod says sunset law, I swear to you.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, make some points about the, uh, Quaker Road uh, rezoning issue. Uh, and the first, uh, point is spot zoning, uh, I'm not here to proclaim, I'm, it's learned it as, as counsel there. Uh, he made, uh, he made some references to, uh, prior cases on spot zoning. Uh, that if I interpret it correctly, says that if a change in zoning is in, in accordance and in conjunction with a comprehensive plan, that it's okay. It's not spot zoning. Uh, might be true in some cases. I'm, I'm sure it is. He, he cited the cases. But from my standpoint, when you request a, uh, a zoning change for one lot in a three plot, one lot for a three lot cluster, that's spot zoning. Uh, it's been a while since I've uh, looked at the, uh, comprehensive plan, but my recollection is there is a strong section in there that says anything you do that's, uh, gateway to the village walk with extra care. And certainly that is within several steps of the village. So that's another consideration. Uh, the next issue I have, uh, let me check, see if there's anybody from the planning board. No. Okay. So I can cast some aspersions. Uh, with all due respect, I think, uh, they were remiss in not turning this down. I think they put this board in kind of an untenable position because uh, in the first place, the, the code says that anything in an R three, a zone requires three quarters of an acre to do any kind of building. By their, uh, submission, they are short of that. They are less than three quarters of an acre. So, uh, it would be illegal to do anything there in of itself. More importantly though, they, uh, the, the, uh, code says, uh, and I'll read it rather than try to paraphrase it. Under one sixteen dash eight three, uh, section B two, small b. Any inconsistencies with any zoning regulations will require zoning board of appeals approval prior to any, uh, board action. So that said, there is an existing inconsistency. And I might suggest that it, it borders on, it, it may be illegal for you to approve this with this, with this in the code. So, uh, regarding the code itself, the advisory board stated that we should perhaps look at the overall zoning, uh, issues and what sections are in what, what the districts. And, uh, I agree with that. And that's an admirable undertaking, but having not done that, But having not done that, it would be it would be remiss to make this change. Uh, finally, uh. I I don't believe that. Making one change would be consistent with the Advisory Board's uh. Plan to look at the overall uh zoning code. So with that, I respectfully request that the board deny the request. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rod. Anybody else on items on the agenda? Anybody online? Nobody? Okay. And we'll go to unfinished business. Hey, we have the social uh media policy. Um, I'm looking for a motion to approve the. Social media media policy is drafted. I will make a I will make that motion. Motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
Do do we need to? Motion with the proposed changes as well or? With the two, do we need to make the motion with the proposed changes as well, the two misspellings?
Yes. There there are two misspelled names. I'm not sure which ones Martha, you got the thing on Martha's got them, so. You want me to add to my motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if we have to. The social media policy with the name corrections. I will make a motion to approve it with the name corrections.
I will second the motion to approve it with the name corrections.
Any discussion on the name corrections or the social media policy? No, okay.
Like to say that Chris's name is very difficult and that's coming for me, so.
I I just in discussion, I want to thank everyone involved with it, Luke and and the whole board and Martha and everyone that got involved with this. Uh, I know it it took a while, but I think it was good. We met, we had a special meeting, we met on it and uh. We got everything, I think, tweaked where we needed, so.
Yep.
I agree. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's Carrie. Next, we have the three fifty-nine Quaker rezoning request. I'll entertain any motions on that.
I will make a motion to uh not approve the zoning request for three fifty-nine Quaker Road.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is carried. Next, new business, uh, we have to add one item. Which would be N and that would be the LE or the AEDs. I have a motion to uh author to add the AED um purchase. Um, and new business.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is carried. Uh, new business, we have a special event application for the parking lot use for the Rock Rural Outreach Center. Um, we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next, we have the West Falls temporary use permit. For the West Falls Center of Arts uh to be. Held on July second, two thousand twenty-three, start at ten AM to nine PM. Um, I would entertain a motion to um approve contingent upon a parking and um traffic uh plan.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's carrying. And next we have the gas policy and that's. Uh, for the threshold amount of thirty thousand dollars, which matches the threshold included in our capital asset policy for all lease leases um for the town. Have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Okay, next, request to hire Roger Leback to be a part-time dog control officer. Um, at the starting rate of twenty dollars per hour. The civil service title is Dog Control Officer RPT. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Go to work. Just don't take my dog, all right? Okay, next we have the purchase of the uh trees for the town hall campus here. And there are three trees and the cost of twenty-one twenty-two thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars um. And these are uh to be put in certain areas around the uh campus to enhance the look of our building. I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Also, yeah, that also will be coming out of our contingent funds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That is carried. And next we have a budget amendment for the trees. What did I do with it? Oh, you have it. You mind? Right here. I I got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, this is uh from Kathleen Moffett. And she asked that we approve um the budget amendment amendment is follows decrease. The A one nine nine zero contingent by two thousand one hundred seventy-five and increase A one six two zero. That four two two buildings and grounds by two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Oop, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next, we have a request from Chris Moosehaven. Uh, to hire seasonal pool and recreation staff as presented. The rates are based on the board approved two thousand twenty-three rate chart. Which is attached. In two thousand twenty-three, the minimum wage increased from thirteen dollars and twenty cents to fourteen dollars and twenty cents per hour. And the program costs were raised to offset the rate increase. Do I have a motion to approve as listed?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next, we have another request from Chris. And this is to request to hire seasonal and pool recreation staff as presented. The rates are based on the board's approved two thousand twenty-three rate chart. With the same increase in minimum wage. Do I have a motion to approve as listed?
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next, something we do every year, it's the ten-hour workday. And this is from Elizabeth De Vizio. Please approve a ten-hour, four-day work week for the highway employees from May first, two thousand twenty-three. To September first, two thousand twenty-three. Any questions? I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Chuck. Second. Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next, we have uh the. Roger Pigeon, um, we um. Retirement. This is from Roger. I am retiring is of is of April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three from my position as the Assessor of the Town of Aurora. I'm also resigning from my appointed position as the Assessor for the Town of Aurora. My first day of retirement will be April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Do I second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just say that Roger's uh probably one of the best assessors in New York State and I wish him the best. Of luck in his retirement. He did the town very well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. And this is from Martha. This is the Assessor Appointment. Please accept resignation. Time to Roger Pigeon is Assessor for the Town with his last day, April twenty-eighth. Um, in his first day of retirement, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Please appoint Stephen R. Pigeon as Assessor for the Town of Aurora to fill the unexpired term of Roger Pigeon. As appointed Assessor from four twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three to nine thirty, two thousand twenty-five. I have a motion to prove.
So moved.
Motion by Chuck. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. And this is from Elizabeth Cassidy, Code Enforcement Officer. She requests approval for silver service title change for Jennifer Hawkins from Clerk PT to Clerk PT Seasonal effective May first, two thousand twenty-three. To September eighth, two thousand twenty-three. This allows her to work up to thirty-nine point five hours to accumulate the building. Accommodate the building department during the busy season. I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
By Chuck.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion?
I took a look at the uh latest building permits and so on. It looks like you're pretty busy already.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next is a uh request from Chris to approve. There's only donation um presented below to towards bands for the July third celebration. Uh, the donation is to go online eight two zero eight dot one. And this is for one hundred dollars. This is from Delarios. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. And next we have the approval. Um, motion to approve the purchase of the AED. And all the equipment listed with total cost of one thousand nine hundred and three dollars and seventy-five cents to be installed at the community pool. Exterior bathroom. And this would be uh to come out of the contingent account, which we're probably going to need a budget amendment. Kathleen, we can do that next meeting maybe. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Second.
Second.
Like my Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is carried. Communications and reports. We have the March two thousand twenty-three REC Building Department Dog Control and Work requisitions. And uh we also have a letter from the Comp Alliance Member Loyalty Award Letter. And the town received two thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars in member loyalty for being a customer of work uh. Comp Alliance and for having um pretty good record with them, so. So extra money. And next we have business from the board members. Start with Luke.
Um, yeah, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, we did use code red for the first time in a for a general notification. To the area of Shoper Road to talk about the upcoming potential road closure to local traffic only. Um, that went out. We had sixty-some confirmed unique texts and emails, and then there were some calls as well, so didn't hear any complaints. I guess that's a good thing. Um, so good to see it being used. The um, the ambulance, maybe you saw there was a beautiful gentleman on channel two, right? Uh, speaking about ambulances, but Erie County, it's great to see that they're helping us out and looking to provide two backup ambulances in this area. That was announced by executive county Executive Pollen Cars, and now it's at the legislature, so um. An issue to look forward to and to talk to anybody you know on the county side. If you see him, we could talk about that later. Because I think you had a call, right? Yeah. Um, we are setting the date for a West Falls meeting. Put a few things on the agenda out there. We're looking for the final week of May and uh. Dave sent out a request to the DOT to get them out there to talk about their plans for the road. But we also need to talk about round two of um New York Forward funding. The uh, the committee that chooses the applications has graciously offered to come and take a walking tour. Um, and look at some of the projects that are a little bit farther along than the last time that we submitted. So uh, we'll let you know the date of that when we get it set. Um, Climate Smart Community Task Force, all sorts of things going on. Just two things they did. Well, we did participate in an Earth Day celebration um at Hamlin Park uh was sort of the first one. But there was a surprising large amount of people. I think several dozen garden tools were swapped between people, which is good. And then also organizing a June event um that is going to encourage walking and biking, kind of like we did last year. But this time also encouraging local businesses, so working with them to look at plans. Um, setting up QR codes in their businesses. If you walk or bike, then you get a special benefit, and that's been really well received as well. So we'll keep on working on that.
Thanks, Chuck.
Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate Jim Granville and everyone from the Center for the Airs and receiving the grant from the Art Services Incorporated. That was great. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is I just like to um. Let everyone know the the uh status of the landscaping here at Town Hall. When we finished the Town Hall, the contractor put some fill-in and mostly on the Oakwood side. And it had Japanese knotweed in it, and they have since um. Made several treatments to try and try and get rid of the knotweed. Um. We at that time signed an agreement, an agreement with them that was ending in June of this year, so that's coming right up. So shortly we will be having a um. Uh, you know, we'll be inspecting it to see if there's any more knotweed and hopefully it's gone, but if not. The contractor is responsible to uh handle that situation. So when you when you take a look at the landscape on the Oakwood side of Town Hall, uh, it will get better, I promise. So just to let everyone know that.
Joe?
Uh, two Saturdays ago, the Open Space Committee, a number of the members and myself took a hike to identify the potential walking trail at Major's Park. I was very pleasantly surprised with how established there already is an established trail, so this is going to be a little less work than we initially thought. And it's actually gorgeous. I did not know this particular path exists. It's exist. It's very easy to get to and it takes you out over, there's like a little escarpment there and it takes you out over the wetlands back there. So there's some real great potential for some benches out there. You can be able to watch the life cycle of the wetlands as they grow and shrink and. All the flora and fauna involved. It was really, it was really great. Um, then we proceeded to cut up towards Hubbard and we came through uh the Hubbard Cabin. Which is an absolute eyesore, and it was the first time I've actually inspected it firsthand and really poked my head inside. And I have to say I am uh one hundred percent on board with with. I think that thing needs to come down. But uh, we can have that discussion and we can open it to uh the public, but um, you know, I think Rob Goller definitively proved it's not connected Albert Hubbard in any way. And it uh, it is uh, it's a, it's nasty. So at any rate, just putting that out there, I think it's something we're going to need to take a serious look at. I talked to Dave about it a little bit and got some ideas of what that might. Yeah, it is, and it's not even, I mean, uh, just to elaborate briefly, like say we. We we wouldn't want a cabin there. You know, we would never build one there. It's this little narrow strip of land that we, I don't even know what the intended use of it. If we were to pour hundreds of thousands of dollars into it to make a cabin, I'm not even sure we'd do with it. So I I think it's kind of a no-brainer, but uh, those are my two cents. But anyway, it's exciting. We also specked out the, I know Dave had offered help with the parking lot redesign. We identified um exactly what I do. It's going to be very simple. Because I won't be doing any of it. Um, but it's it's nice and we're going to save the kiosk too. We looked at that kiosk. That kiosk is solid. So that part of the plan just went right out the window. Um, it's great. Everybody's excited on open space. I think we're, I think we're going to have a real asset. We're going to get that trail marked. And then slowly over time, we can add, you know, some things to help traversing different terrain, but uh, it's exciting stuff. The only other thing is EA Baseball stepped forward and asked for permission. There's going to be a large blank white wall. I don't know if there's only going to be one. When the bathroom's done, but they want to paint a mural. Uh, they're going to hire artists through the muse jar. They're going to pay for the whole thing. And I asked them to. And I asked them to put together a plan and come, come to the board with it. So uh, that, that could be really nice. I think that'll, that could be a good use of that space and also like it obviously has already a swimming pool. So it'd be nice to tie baseball into it too. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Jim?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I appreciate, I don't know if you can see me up there or not, but uh
I can.
Oh, good. So uh, yeah, thank, no new business, but thank you so much. I appreciate uh uh uh, all the information tonight, certainly getting that grant uh in West Falls was appreciative. And uh, look forward to working with the uh West Falls committee as well, whatever date we pick in late May. Uh, we've already had a ton of improvements uh out at the facility out there. I think people are excited about Route two forty and uh both sides of the aisle working to improve that roadway. So thank you.
Hey Jim, thanks. Um, I just have a couple of things. Um, I did get a call from Jason Hurley, uh, the director and executive assistant to the health department at Erie County uh about the ambulance service and um um, he went over the, the program and it sounds like a great um a great thing that'll assist uh our firemen and our present um ambulance service. Um, I did make a call into uh James Millsowski, who is the um uh, or the uh legislator. And uh, he's a hundred percent on, on board with, with it. And you know, as long as everyone's included in the discussions, the hospitals, the firemen, everyone in, which I think is gonna be. So um, it was a good conversation. Um, I also wanna congratulate, I went to the East Aurora Educational Foundation uh breakfast at the Roycroft Friday and the um distinguished alumni hall of fame. And congratulations to Dr. Jeffrey Kibler, Scott Moore, Dr. Jason Oler and Harry uh Tuzumato and Grant Hamilton. Uh, all um were recognized um at this awards dinner. And that's all I have. So we'll go into audience two. And this is an opportunity for anyone to talk to uh the board on any items whatsoever. Whoever's, I don't know, whoever's first. Okay, come on up. Um, please keep it to a reasonable time.
Yes, Mark Wolfling, Port seven five Center Street. Back in February, I emailed you a deficit report we collected from a study of the New York State election audit back in two thousand twenty, when I was determined to be a nonessential person. I use my skills as a network architecture and security analyst to go through the election.
Get a mic a little bit more. You can pick that right up. It's easier.
All right. Oh, I'll just get it there. May I present the resolution you've seen this?
Jim, Jim, you're still here. I'll give yours to Martha.
And several of you reached out to me for more information on our studies and the deficit report we came up with. I appreciate that. And uh, Jim, I have an answer. Uh, have, have a sheet. I'm gonna also give you on some questions you came up with last time. And it'll answer those. Since you have all the data and the numbers, I'm gonna just jump right into this.
Yep.
It's, it states whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have a free and fair election and the right of suffrage can be denied by the debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise. And I was a election inspector at the last election. I've, I, I analyzed the whole election process and our our votes here are being debased. We're being harmed and we have sought resolution from our legislators over the last year and a half and they have given us um inaction and uninterest in our pleas. So we have brought down our grievances to the town levels and we're doing this in towns all across New York State and asking for a resolution to have an audit and then audit of the New York State election voter rolls. Uh, the second, whereas it is an affirmative duty of our election officials to comply with all federal and state laws governing administration and procedure of our elections thereby guaranteeing our elections are accurate and free of distortion and manipulation. And deficit report shows that there is a lot of distortion and manipulation in the voter rolls. We have basic math. We had three hundred and thirty-eight thousand more votes tabulated than voters who actually showed up and mailed in their votes. Three hundred thirty-eight thousand is, is not even close to accurate and it, it needs to be addressed. We have one point three million what's called the regular voters in, in the New York State voter rolls. A regular voters is a term to describe ineligible, suspicious or probably illegal votes. And a lot of these voters are voting. Um, ninety percent of the Erie County vote is being diluted and debased in the city of Buffalo. And across New York State, ninety percent of the entire state of these three hundred thirty-eight thousand is, is um is down in the New York City area. So the New York City area is greatly, greatly diluting our votes here locally in Erie County. Third, whereas on your thing, okay, continue.
Yeah.
Our constitutional system of representation government only works when the worth of honest ballots is not diluted by invalid ballots procured by corruption and assure an accuracy can only be achieved through the operational integrity of our elections as defined by the laws governing the following five processes. Rigorous veri- verification of voter identity, which needs to be done because of voter identi- identity, these one point three million are not verified. And as an election inspector, I looked at those pads. If somebody came in with an irregular database on their registration, they could not vote. They could correct it right there on the spot. So most of these are not being tabulated from, from the voting precincts. Because from what I could tell, it's impossible to vote if your data is off or irregular, like your, your address. Your address has to be correct to make sure you're at the right precinct. And we have a lot of those um deficiencies. Proven ballot security and intact chain of custody. I, I evaluated that. The, the chain of cust- the custody was really questionable. I left the Gau School's precinct. They wrapped things up shortly after quarter after ten. By the time they had everything tabulated and she took off to uh hand it off to a unknown person sitting in the parking lot right out here of this building. And that, that unknown person disappeared into the night, took it somewhere downtown and uh they called the election by ten thirty at night and there was no way for her to even physically get that little chip from town of Aurora uh down to Buffalo at the, at the precinct. Uh, number three, voting system certified to be secured from operational physical and cyber threats. We had thirty percent of the um ESNS DS two hundred voting machines failed. Thirty-eight percent of our machines failed in our precincts here in the town of Aurora. I don't know if any of you are aware of that, but that disenfr- disenfranchised voters, when that happened, uh, took one over an hour to, to uh get repaired and up and working. And the other one was an hour and a half before that one was, was fixed. And, and I brought that up with the board of elections downtown um on on that and they, they could give me no data as to the number of voting machines that are failing across towns, but I've found similar results in other towns from poll workers down there. So the uh, the, the machines are failing. Um, it number four meets all FISMA and state operational and risk assessment assessment requirements. Number five meets audibility and traceability requirements in operational policy. Um, these, the New York State voter rolls have never been audited. It's, it's department that never has had an audit. It's time we have an audit of these roles, especially when all their data that we've analyzed shows all these deficiencies. On, on the second page. Summarizes the results that we found. Whereas an open source audit of the New York State two thousand twenty election conducted by New York citizens audit, that's a group of concerned citizens that I, I came together and collaborated with has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies and violation of both federal and state laws. It gives the numbers of all the deficiencies here. I will save them.
Yeah, if you could start wrapping it up, Mark, cause if you could.
Okay, we have the other uh whereas about these, these findings of accuracy and we had sought redress for these grievances for over a year and a half. These, these violations include in the attorney general, secretary of state, state board of elections, inspector general FBI, state leadership, the Democrat and Republican parties, county election officials, sheriffs, district attorneys and others. And we've got nothing but inaction and indifference from them. And in, in order to uh hear our grievance, we bring in our grievance down to the town levels. We're asking for your help. Alls, alls we need for you to do is to agree with these results that we have found that we need an audit of the New York State elections. And it doesn't cost the towns anything and it doesn't involve you any further than, than signing our resolution and pushing this further to get them to do what their, their jobs are, which is to uh to fix this and to audit this election.
Yeah, thank you.
Aye.
Um, I would just um say that um I'm all in favor for fair elections and I, I wouldn't have a problem with auditing anybody to keep them uh honest. But this board has an unwritten policy of not supporting resolutions that are not directly involving the town of Aurora.
Well, it does directly involve every resident of this town because all our votes are being diluted and debased and
Well, I would, I would put it up to the rest of the board. Do you?
Well, I just have one quick question.
Sure.
So I, I, I received your email and I, so I did some, I called some election lawyers.
Sure.
And they indicated the best course of action based on your, your complaints is would it be to file a lawsuit? Has, has your organization?
Process of, of putting that together, but it costs, it costs money, it takes time and we're trying what from my standpoint, I mean, I'm just a local resident in the town here. I, I, I can't do, my expertise is, is elsewhere. I'm trying to get the people whose job it is to do the audit and to fix the elections, the board of elections to, to do their job. And, and they're, they're just meeting us with uh inaction and indifference to our requests.
Yeah, otherwise I, I do agree with the supervisor that this, I mean, and you've even mentioned you bringing it down to the town level to hope to spur action at an upper level.
That's the only, that's the only recourse we have at this.
Well, I would, I would suggest a lawsuit. I know they're complicated, but, but the, the, the election attorneys I spoke to said, that's how you bring the facts to bear. It forces both sides to show their cards and there's no more uh
We are and, and we're getting uh, the, the, the people want their voices to be heard and that's what we're doing here at the town levels. We're bringing them up. We have several towns in Erie County doing it. We have many of them downstate where the biggest part of the problem is. So.
You guys?
You know, I, I mean, we've already had this conversation three times.
Sure.
Mark, so uh, you know, we're, I agree with Supervisor Bach is just
I know, and I'm not in the habit of bringing resolutions to the board, but yet here we are. So um, if could I pick this up tonight or should I come next week to get your answer?
Well, I think pretty much, are you on board, Luke?
Yeah, no, we're, we're not gonna look into this.
Um. So that is our answer with the, the
Indifference and inaction. Thank you.
And I kinda, I spoke, you know, we, we, you came in with
I know, I thank you for uh
And I told you that, you know, listen, I, I can't agree with you more if, if something is not right. I think I agree with Joe. Sue him, you know? Uh, a resolution, we could do a resolution every meeting. We could do five resolutions every minute. We get requests. So we, we kinda made an unwritten policy that we're not gonna support and molestate directly. And I mean directly involved.
All right. Can I get signatures tonight?
What's that?
Could I get signatures tonight?
Signatures.
On the resolution? The last page.
My, my
I mean, the last page says yes or no. It's got your names. If you flip to the last page.
No, there is, there's an appropriate avenue to challenge the election. Are you putting the court system also as a part of this that you don't trust the court system or well, because there is a mechanism for you to, to challenge the results of the election. We don't have the resources to look into this.
Oh, you don't have to be honest.
Any further, we don't need anything further.
You didn't need resources. We're putting our names behind it. We have to trust and believe what it is you're putting in front of us. And to be honest with you, I'm very far away from that, but we do not have, I do not have the resources to do this. And this is not a part of what we're here to do as the town board. There is an independent court that is there for this purpose. So no, I will not be signing anything, but if you want my personal opinion, I would sign no for this, but no, I'm not going to be signing. It's not brought about in front of this board. And no member here has said that they would like to put it up to the vote. I think that's your answer right there. And thank you for being an active citizen, but this board here today has made the decision not to move forward with the resolution.
All right, just while a little pushback, if I may, um, you don't have to trust me. You don't have to trust me. I'm, I'm, I'm a, a citizen of the United States. It's you, the representative that has, has to prove that this data is, is accurate. So you, I have zero trust in you and that's the way it works. You don't need to have trust in me, but you could, you could do the audit and then, then the issue is resolved. That's, that's simply it.
Actually, we could not do the audit. The ability to do an audit of the voting of the election system. The town of Aurora is now the ability to do an election system. And I'm very sorry that you don't have trust in us and is aboard, but I think we've spoken this issue. So let's move on from
I do it. I, I do it. Trust you. And I appreciate what, what you guys do for the town.
Okay.
I do. All right.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Good evening and thank you for your time. Um, Jeff Marcello, um Aurora Town Justice. And I wanna uh congratulate all you guys for coming to see the town board. You're seeing uh real government in action. And I, I welcome you to come to the town court session too, if you'd like. Uh, that's another good opportunity to get government involvement and uh court clerk would be happy to sign um a verification of your attendance uh if you're so inclined. Uh, did Elizabeth, is, is Tony on YouTube?
I'd just like to say, and I'm sure they're not here just to get the signature. They're here because they wanna be an active participant. So they wouldn't need the signature for that. No.
Of course, but it's saying real government, real acting, just like we have real government at the court.
Enough of the signature right there.
So my purpose here this evening is um to let you know uh what we've been doing. I was here a couple of months ago to let you know that um we had asked for Don Gothier to be uh appointed as a consultant really to assist Elizabeth, who at that point had only had a couple of months in relative to being a town court clerk, because we had lost our more experienced court clerk. Um, Dawn has been uh of, of great help. And I think she's been assisting uh the court wonderfully and, and helping to train Elizabeth. But as I noted a couple of weeks or a couple of months ago, it's a long process. It's a very difficult job and it takes a long time to become really um experienced uh and intuitive with respect to the, to the work that needs to be done. Judge DeFilippo and I have uh received resumes and uh and interviewed and, and we've talked to um various board members. I've spoken to some of them. I know Tony has Judge Filippo spoken to some of you as well. And we've tried to respect the open meetings law so as not to speak to all of you at once, but we're at a point where I wanted to address everybody on bank, as it were. And uh, and Judge DeFilippo, are, are you present? Tony, can you hear me? Is he? Uh, he doesn't have his camera on. His mic appears to be on, but Tony, if you're hearing us, um, we're, we're not seeing or hearing you. In any event, I'll, I'll just indicate to this board that we're finding that the amount budgeted for our court clerks is insufficient. We cannot hire a qualified court clerk, an experienced court clerk to come in and sit with Elizabeth and work the court. Don Gothier has a full-time job in the Village of Dupuy and we are able to get her for four hours here, four hours there. She's coming in on court nights and really helping. It's been invaluable. Um, the work that needs to be done is excessive. Uh, Ms. Wilbur is there late at night and um she's putting in very long hours in part because she needs to uh try to keep the court afloat and keep our heads above water with all of the work that needs to be done. Judge Phil, when I quite frankly, are a little concerned about her burnout. She's demonstrated a wonderful work ethic for us and we're very impressed with how hard she's working and how, how much uh, uh, she's really shown dedication to the job. And she's got almost five months in at this point, which is coming along and she's, I know she's working hard and, and, and trying to um meet all the milestones uh associated with training. But Judge Philip, when I need more money in our court clerk's line. And we've been, we, we've tried to be very clear with you independently and, and a public session here on bank, I'm, I'm here to tell you we don't have enough funds to hire qualified help. We don't, we are not paying Elizabeth what she deserves to be paid either right now. And we need to not make an incremental percentage increase, but rather a wholesale adjustment with regard to the court clerk salaries. I've done some research and discovered what um, you know, other I've done some research and discovered what um, you know, other court clerks make, and I want this court, this board to know that the court in the town of Aurora has the same jurisdiction as the court in the town of Amherst and Chictawaga and Hamburg and West Seneca. And the the cases, of course, range from felonies at which we handle preliminary hearings to misdemeanors. Uh, we have a a busy court, in part because we have a busy village that this that doesn't have its own court. So our town handles all the town biz outside the village, plus we handle all the village biz. So, for example, in in Amherst, they have a town court, and then they have a village of Williamsville Court. Um, in Aurora, we have one court that handles all the business, both in the town and in the village. Judge DeFilippo and I uh are intending to um more closely analyze our budget that we have expended and the monies we have remaining in our budget uh for the balance of this year so that we can come to you and frankly, we're intending to ask for a budget amendment to reallocate monies from various budget lines within the court's budget to the court clerk's line so that we can hire somebody and maintain uh two full-time clerks, which is something we desperately need in our court. I would note that um there are other positions locally in our area that we're competing with. For example, the Village of East Aurora is hiring a deputy clerk treasurer at a rate that far exceeds the wor- the rate that Ms. Wilbur is currently being paid. And I would hazard a guess that it's probably one of those um more likely to be a nine-to-five job, not involving the level of stress and the hours that the court clerk's uh job involves. Um, once we have had a chance to look through the WebLogic program, and thank you for putting that software together. It's terrific uh that the town has that, uh, we'll have a better sense of where we stand in real time through the first four months of the year. Uh, so we'll have a a sense of what we can raid and from other areas of our budget line to try to come to you with a request. We want to do this swiftly uh because um, well, we need to um we need to give Elizabeth a little bit of a break from all of the hours she's been putting in, and uh we need another full-time court clerk on board. One of the things we've done, just FYI, um, you know, I I don't have to tell this board that, of course, as the third co-equal branch of government, our justice um our justice court needs to have two clerks, and this board needs to fund the payment of those clerks. Um, of the candidates that Judge Filippo and I have interviewed, none of those qualified candidates would come to work for the rate of pay that this court or that we currently have in our budget line. So um, we will be um asking you for your help. Um, didn't realize that we were gonna need that level of help when I was here two months ago, and that's just what we have discovered. Be happy to meet individually with any or all of you in a way that does not violate the open meetings law, of course. And am happy to answer any questions you may have or get any direction from you relative to the manner in which you'd like us to bring this proposal to the board.
Thank you, Judge. I'll um repeat what I said before. Um, I have a standing invitation for both you and Tony to come to my office. Uh, you were uh on vacation in Easter time. I told Tony um, you guys grab the uh applications and come and meet with me, and we'll sit down and go over this, and I'm still waiting.
So wait a second, I was not on vacation in Easter time. I was here. I don't know what you're talking about, but I do know that Tony did speak to you and to.
Well, I'm telling you what Tony told me. He said, when you get back from your Easter vacation, I thought that's what he said, that uh we would make a an appointment to see you. I said, it's a good thing. We can go over strategy. I'm still waiting for it, so I I.
Wonderful. Um, when are you next available that we can?
You lean the time, and I'll I'll meet with you guys. I mean, I I it's it's important, and I uh I'm not the one that's dragging my feet here. Um, I've been uh waiting patiently to hear, and I guess other people have been talking to you. Uh, other councilmen have been talking to you when we were supposed to have a meeting, and I still don't know the reason the reason why we haven't met.
Well, actually, I believe Judge Filippo did call you to speak to you. At least that was my understanding. I don't know if he has joined us or not. But i- if he hadn't, then he and I have a terrible miscommunication because my understanding was that he was gonna be in touch with each of you, and in fact, reported to me that he had been in touch with each of you.
And I was interested in, you know, getting together to talk about this. This is an important subject matter for the court.
Judge DeFilippo did contact both both Jim and I and and so on, but he Tony did say, when you get back from, I don't know if it was Easter or not, but you were out of town and you were gone, we'll get together.
You'll you'll call us and we'll meet, and we'll put some strategy together, and I still haven't heard nothing.
Okay, well, uh, then I think there's been some real miscommunication here, and I I'm sorry. I'm gonna get to the bottom of that. I'm disappointed that Judge Filippo wasn't on as I thought he was gonna be this afternoon or this evening, rather, but I appreciate your time and um.
You call me, we'll make it, we'll make any time work.
We're looking for your direction. We're looking for your direction and your assistance in how to um, what would be most palatable for this board and going forward with regard to the needs of the court.
I just I just have one question.
Please.
Judge. Was the wage posted in the ad? Uh, when we requested this position was open?
Initially, no. And what happened was in the course of our investigation and our our research, and when I say research, let me rephrase that. In the course of our interviews, when we spoke to the candidates, that's when we were discovering that we are way off base, and we are in desperate need of a serious adjustment to our to our rate of pay.
Okay.
So, but we'd also, by the way, like to hire somebody local to hear in the somebody from the town of Aurora. It would be a wonderful opportunity. It's just that the um the town of Aurora is not an inexpensive place to live, and we need to be able to pay a living wage so that we can have a local person working here.
It couldn't be more. None of none of the applicants were residents, as I read, right? The resumes that we were sent, that I was sent, none of them were residents of the town.
Um, yeah, I and I guess I didn't realize the extent to which Judge Filippo had spoken to you and so far as providing you the applications themselves. But no, the ones that we interviewed that that were the most qualified were not local. You're absolutely right about that.
And when you say that, you know, the wage is way out of line, I I, you know, and I'm not disputing, maybe it is. I'm not saying that. However, I just Googled uh, justice law clerk salary in Buffalo, New York, and it's right in line within, frankly, two hundred and fifty dollars of what the budgeted amount is, so.
Well.
I don't know.
Maybe what I'll.
Fire apart.
Well, may maybe what I'll need to share with you is is a copy of the the list of towns and their budgets and what they've got identified um, and what court clerks are being paid. One of the things, uh, Councilman, is that um, and I may have said this earlier. If I did, I apologize for repeating myself, is that while we aren't entitled to have two clerks, we have tried to save the money, save the town money historically by having what we had identified as a senior clerk and a junior clerk, and that way we're not paying two full um, senior clerk salaries, as it were, because the junior clerk is in a position to be able to kind of learn from the senior clerk and develop, and and it's been a nice segue and a transition to go after a couple of years of experience and being able to kind of run the show by yourself, as it were, uh, to be able to segue to a senior clerk position. And we'd like to continue that model because we think it saves this board and this town money. Um, but that's not necessarily the way it goes in other towns, frankly. In a lot of other towns, uh, the judges don't share clerks. They have their own dedicated clerk that has the same, each of whom has the same salary.
And and you know, you know, Your Honor, that when you compare local towns, they're all over the board.
I I have, I've got.
The wages are higher, the wages are lower. It's it's.
Well, some are full-time, some are not. All there are some courts that have um an arsenal of or a whole army of uh court clerks. Um, you know, a dozen or more in some busier towns, and then some of the really small towns don't, you know, they only have part-time clerks because there's they just don't have the traffic. We have enough traffic and enough caseload to warrant competent clerks, and we would ask you to provide us the resources so we can have good, competent.
And instead of getting into detail, I think it'd be a good good item for us to just chat about in my office and 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 uh I look forward to someone's call to set this meeting up.
Yeah, well, I'll uh I'll call first thing tomorrow and get this set up supervisor.
Thank you. I just like to add real quick, um, you know, the buck stops with us on this. The 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 village got out of the court business, which they have the opportunity to do. The town doesn't have that opportunity. Uh, you and Judge DeFilippo are the are are justices, so if you say you need two full-time clerks, I think that's uh, you have to take that at uh face value because you're the one that's there every day. So um or whatever.
Yeah.
You're the one that runs the court.
Uh, one of the things that you have noticed, or if you haven't already seen it come across your desks, is that Elizabeth's comp time has really um, she hit the cap, and it was such that we need to uh pay her out of the budget that we have for the comp time because um she's only allowed to be get up to two hundred and forty hours of comp time. And, you know, it's only been a couple of months.
Yeah, I don't think we're arguing about having two clerks.
Okay.
You know, that's not, that's not the issue.
No, I we'll we'll take this forward. I mean, it's an important position. I think one other thing to consider here is that you and Tony can have the communication with the people that are coming in to the office as well, right? We I mean, we have to have clerks because you are not able to have a one-on-one conversation with one party to a to a dispute within litigation. So it's it's an important position. It's an important public-facing position. Let's move forward on this. You can you can talk, and we'll let you two guys have that conversation. We'll talk amongst ourselves and we'll we'll kind of go.
Once we get the information and we sit down as a board and discuss it, it's.
Yeah, or we can, you know. So as not to break the open meetings law, we'll call and figure it out and.
That makes good sense. I appreciate that, and and you make a good point. Uh, with all due respect to the enforcement officers' position uh or office. Um, part of Ms. Cassidy's job is to is to meet and deal with the public as they come in to to talk to her. And uh, you're absolutely right, Luke. Um, Judge Filippo and I are not allowed to have what they call ex parte communication with defendants unrepresented or even lawyers, um, who, and that's one of the very, very important roles that a court clerk needs to be able to fill for us. So thank you again for your time. Really appreciate it and really look forward to meeting with you, Mr. Bach and Mr. Snyder.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Anybody else? Sir?
My name is Bill Kender, and I live in Eden, New York. This is a little shortcut that I made. I'll just set this here.
What does that say? Just out of why it's facing the camera. What does it say?
It says blink eyes open, and it's with a slash after the blink and a dot after the B, if you can see it like in the on the screen.
Advertisement for something or?
That is actually a shortcut that goes to a collection of links. I would just wanted to address what briefly what Mark was saying regarding New York Citizens Audit. I made a collection of um, it's three pages worth, and that's kind of easy because you could remember what blink eyes open is to get to. But basically, on page one of this, there were like a lot of the different presentations given by the Director of New York Citizens Audit.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are we okay with this? Um, having a website advertised on our public?
It's not a website. It's just basically a a link to.
You you've had it up for a little bit. I'd feel more comfortable if I get down. I just don't want to. We don't endorse anything that that we're not familiar with. Thank you.
But basically, on page one of that was um Marley Hornick, who is the Director of New York Citizens Audit, has given several um, of her presentations regarding what this is all about. And actually, when you had brought up Mr. McCann regarding the proper procedure to go forward, um, some of those um, actually that were sent out by the Board of Elections were recently addressed directly by New York Citizens Audit, and they were written out with the original and then their response like in red following that. So if people wanted to read that for themselves, it's a whole lot of information to understand. And um if they went to that site, b dot link slash eyes open on page three, actually, page two, they would see that. So basically, that's all I really wanted to mention to you is I thank you for your for your time for that, and um basically, the thing that the the whole issue with this is, it's like more like instead of an election issue, it's a civil rights issue. Because what they discovered was something called steganography, which is actually within the New York State voter rolls in the Nice Voter Database. It's you can understand, you can read about that on page two of it of the b dot link slash eyes open. I just thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online? Nobody else going once? Step up to the mic, please give us your name.
My name's Dean Anthony. I'm also about here from the New York Citizens Audit. I understand your decisions tonight. I don't agree with them. You know, your reference to the fact that our best recourse is to take this to the courts is an application of your responsibilities.
Where is he from? I didn't hear the address.
I'm from West Santa Cruz.
Thank you.
And I am a concerned citizen, and as a concerned citizen, I feel it's my duty when we discover some of these outrageous discrepancies in our voter rolls that we try to do something about it. We've been rebuffed at almost every level of county and and the legislature, the sheriff, the district attorney. We decided to start right here at the local town board levels. And to say that, you know, our best recourse is to file a lawsuit is abdicating your responsibilities as our elected officials. It it's our only recourse to go to our nearest elected officials to try to move this resolution to the legislature. We understand that your town board or any other one has had nothing to do with the sorry state of our voter rolls. But we ask that you were to move this resolution to the legislature who could do something about it. And it's not filing a lawsuit. It's calling for and paying for an end-to-end audit of the twenty twenty-two election, which is what we've asked for. So I I'm just here to comment that I think you made a a terrible decision by ignoring our request. You're basically ignoring the fact that we've brought grievances to at our local level and we're being ignored. I think it's a sorry state that that has happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we'll go on to staff reports. Chris?
Just decided to get this going. I think we got your great staff uh from there here tonight, so.
Good, thanks. Dave?
Nothing tonight. Well, Liz? Nothing. Did I miss anybody? Shane's not here.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the abstract.
So moved.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, and then it's Carrie. I need a motion now to um go into executive session. Uh, we'll be discussing contractual uh between town and village. Um, we'll take a five-minute recess uh and sign whatever we need to sign and then.
Let's make them way too after the executive session.
Well, we could do that too. Um, in the executive session.
Are you guys all about to vote before I make that call?
All right. We we may not want to leave him in the room alone either, so let's uh let's.
We may or may not be um making a decision on this tonight. Uh, as far as the press, um, I can um, call you in the morning if we make a decision or something like that, so you don't have to wait. I don't know how long it's gonna take. But do I have a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Luke?
I'll I'll move um.
Second.
Second.
My question is, are we level to let Elizabeth go and just state at this point that?
Yes, no, she can go.
If we have any other issues, they will be in the minutes, but will not be in.
No, no, we don't. We don't put our executive sessions online.
No, no, I mean, when we come back, we're gonna have to close the meeting. If we take any action, they will be in the minutes, not on the video recording.
So all in favor? I oppose, and it's Carrie. If you need a signature, come up and then uh we'll have our executive session soon.